All right, we'll call the regular complicating order, 7:33. We'll stand for the legislative.
The legislative is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, if you could call the board please.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Here.
Councilmember Chambers.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Here.
And Mayor DeBoer.
I am here. I will motion for the consent agenda for tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll support.
Okay, changes? Sue?
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Okay, assistant comment for items not on the agenda tonight. Up to the board.
Hi, my name is Dirk Ritzman. I'm a member of the American League at the post here in Lowell. Memorial Day parade's coming up, May 28th. And I'd like to, this is my first time doing this, so bear with me. I guess I don't know the procedure. Do you have to ask permission to use Main Street, I guess, or?
You're all set.
You're all set?
Yeah.
Did somebody already done this already? Why didn't you tell me that?
I didn't know.
Oh, okay, no problem. Are we set up for Broadway, though? Very good, like we always are?
Yes.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
Thanks, everyone.
Mayor DeBoer, do you have one letter?
Sure.
I'm writing this again in hopes that the city, I'm writing this again to hope the city of Lowell will rethink of putting the path on Bowes Road. If Lowell is also the city of trees, then coming along, cutting trees and also taking land is not right. I think this only should involve the people on South Bowes Road, side road, not the whole city. There is more than, there's more than the city needs to fix before a path. Thank you for reading this. Please do the right thing. Joanne Miller, 780 Bowes Road.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, good evening. I'm State Representative Thomas Salvino, the state rep here, the 86th district. So I just wanted to give a couple, a few updates from Lansing, where there's someone I want to introduce. First topic, I saw in the Lowell ledger, there was an editorial where someone had some complaints about the railroad crossings. And every day I drive past them and I see people drive all around, they go crazy. And just wanted to let you know, I spoke to the city manager. There's a local surface crossing grant that was made available during the road reform they did, for the road funding a few years ago. There's kind of a process you have to go through to put through the application. It's, I wouldn't say it's necessarily very easy, but you have to also partner with the railroad agency to do it. But if you get through the process and you get approved, the state will pick up 60% of the funding and then the 40% of the funding would have to come from the railroad agency. So I'm happy to do anything I can do to help from my office to try and coordinate and try to get that grant through any way possible. So I just wanted to put that out there so you guys were aware that it was available. A couple of things I'm working on in Lansing. I have a bill that should be voted out of the Senate Education Committee tomorrow. It has to do with restructuring, how we pay for our pension debt, for the public school debt. It's kind of complicated to explain how it works, but it's based on faulty assumptions. And all we're doing is bringing those, we're getting rid of the bad assumptions and we're going to change the debt to be structured like a home mortgage, where it'd be a fixed payment every year. So it's sustainable and predictable. Right now, it's more of like an adjustable re-mortgage, which is kind of unpredictable. So hopefully that'll get passed through tomorrow. And by the way, it did pass out of the House unanimously, under eight to nothing, so I'll probably see that happen. Another bill I introduced helps address chronic wasting disease with deer. It's coming this way. It's starting out in Macon County, it's down in Lansing, and it's closing in on us. There was the first report of chronic wasting disease in a deer that was found in Ione County this past deer season. It was just north of Belvin in Oregon's township. So what my bill would do would be prohibit live deer from being transported or imported into the state of Michigan. It's currently illegal to bring in a harvested deer. You have to process it first before you bring it into Michigan. There's a lot that we don't know about chronic wasting disease, but there's a few things we do know. It passes deer to deer, so it can pass deer's saliva and feces. It's 100% fatal, 100% of the time. And one thing that's really interesting about it is if the deer dies, and it dies in a certain area, the grass that actually grows up in the area where the deer decomposed at, they've actually found the protein that's, that causes CWD in the grass. So it's very lethal. It spreads like wildfire. You know, if we don't contain it, it will spread. Because if we look at what's happening in over states, it's only going to get worse. So there's three bills in that package. I call it a starting point. I think it's something that is going to devastate the local economy when it comes to deer hunting if we don't address it. So with that being said, those are a few things I've been working on. Appreciate your time. I also wanted to introduce State Representative Chris Affedules. He's running for state senate in Senator Hillenbrand's seat, who's term limited out. I'm supporting Chris for state senate. I know for a fact that you do a great job. There's a lot of reasons I want to support Chris. He does the things that I like. He's data-driven, he has a strong financial mind, he's a CPA, and he's a hard worker. Those are some things that I really appreciate. I'll tell you, all the qualities he has that makes him a good state rep. One, I think he's the best at is he's a good listener. I think that's really what you need from an elected official, is someone who can listen. They might not always tell you what you want to hear, but they at least give you an honest opinion, and that's what you'll get from Chris. So thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
I want to thank Representative Albert for that, and members of the, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. Chris Affedules, 240 H. Hill, Grand Rapids Township. As Representative Albert said, I'm the state representative of the 73rd district, which is Grand Rapids Township, East Grand Rapids, Plainfield, Cannon, Cortland, Oakfield, Nelson Spencer Townships to the northeast part of the county. I am in my second term, as you mentioned, Senator Hillenbrand is term limited, I'm proud to have his endorsement as well. And I'm a CPA by trade. I've spent four years in public accounting. I audited government agencies, cities. And then I spent 24 years in private industry. But meanwhile, I was able to serve in local government, as you have, 10 years for the Grand Rapids Township Board, three years as trustee, and then seven years as the treasurer. I think we all get pigeonholed a little bit when you're a CPA, they get you into these positions, but I was happy to do that. And then when the opportunity presented itself, I ran for the state house, left my job in private industry after 24 years as a chief financial officer. And a lot of people said, "Why are you doing that?" And I said, "Well, I've always wanted, I've always wanted to serve at state level." So the sea is open. I just come today to introduce myself, appreciate your consideration. And I will see, I will see a lot of you. I was out visiting many of residents tonight and knocking on some doors here in the city Lowell, and I will be back, I'll be back often. So I don't want, need to bother you with any questions, but I've left my contact information, so if you have anything, please, please do. And I know Dick went from, we've known each other for a long time. As a matter of fact, his, his daughter babysat my, my daughters back about, well, a little over, little under 20 years ago, and was their teacher as well. So, so thank you all very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all.
Anybody else? All right, old business is clear. New business, five items. A, Hearthstone Design Studio, the Showboat Interior Design.
and design is underway on the new structure. Engineers working on the structure have requested additional information regarding interior fit and finishes and product specifications. Examples of product fit and finish decisions include items such as window and door selection and rough openings, trim material and finish, lighting, heating and cooling equipment and elevator specifications. With numerous technical questions regarding interior fit and finish, the city requested the professional services of Hearthstone Design Studio of Grand Rapids to serve as the interior designer of the showboat replacement project. Owner, Ms. Sharon, hope I get this right, Perna Fiallo.
Very good.
I am Italian, so that kind of helps. Will work directly with the city's project manager. Showboat work group and engineers to develop a plan for the finished components of the new structure. Ms. Perna Fiallo has requested a retainer in the amount of $20,000 for her services. Funds for the interior designs professional services are available in the showboat project fund. That will be grant covered. Just a, just a quick change will be caught, the agreement will be $125 an hour for her services, not to exceed $20,000. I'm recommending the city council accept the Hearthstone Design Studio proposal for interior student, for interior design student services for the Lowell Showboat Replacement Project, for cost, for a cost not to exceed $20,000, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contract dated April 30, 2018.
The whole contract is coming from the Hillenbrand one and the grant?
This will be covered out of the grant.
Out of Showboat.
Correct.
Discussion on that, anybody? Mike stole my iPad, so I'll look for a motion on that. Thanks.
Can I make that motion? I'll support.
All right, any other discussion? Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
And Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
All right, here is item B, City Hall Carpet Replacement on the second floor, much needed.
In March 2018, the Department of Public Works issued a request for proposals to interested vendors to replace carpeting at City Hall, mowing, and power. The City Hall portion of the RFP requested vendors to bid replacement of the existing broadloom carpeting on the second floor of City Hall. The carpeting is approximately 15 years old and has separated from the backing, creating potential trip hazards in some public spaces. Approximately 300,000 feet, square feet of carpet are proposed to be replaced, as well as the wall-based trim. The carpeting will be replaced with a 24-inch by 24-inch carpet tile product that is easier to remove or replace when a section becomes stained or damaged. The low-bid product is manufactured by Mannings and Carpet, SDO product line. The vendors will be required to supply quantity of backstock material for future maintenance needs. The city clerk has a sample of a selected product. Do you have it here?
Yeah.
Removal and installation will be coordinated with the vendor to minimize disruptions to city operations and meeting. We received, we received two quotes, quotes from two different firms, Beecham Flooring and Forever Flooring. The selected, the recommended carpet is at $15,622, and this was a budgeted item in the, in the general fund for, this year for this project. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council accept a low bid from Beecham Flooring in the amount of $15,622 to replace carpeting and wall-based trim on the second floor of City Hall.
Anything further? Anything for a further?
When do we look at starting and completion for the project? What's the lead time on the carpet compared to the other?
We were hoping that you'd make this decision three weeks ago, but I'm going to, light power, it depends on the Mannings' production date, whether they have stock or not. And production, again, is prob, could be as long as three to four weeks out. We're probably looking at sometime in June.
Thank you.
What's your habit, how long?
Weekend.
Put it down, weekend?
We're going to do it, we're going to do it nights and basically the week. Weekend coordinating, because I know you have, well, we'd actually probably, as soon as Rotary was done on a Wednesday, we'd probably get in here and start doing it so that Monday's council meeting, that would be all done and have minimal, you know.
Interruption.
Interruption. And again, the light power, we're doing that, and that's going to be done nights and weekends. This being upstairs, basically working around whatever organizational meetings, it's a little bit different than your offices, so.
I recommend that the city council accept a low bid from Beecham Flooring in the amount of $15,622 to replace carpeting and wall-based trim on the second floor of City Hall.
And I'll support.
Any other questions? Sue?
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Item C, to set the public hearing date for the budget, Michael?
Yes, public hearing date will be set Monday, May 21st, at 7:00 p.m. to consider the fiscal year 19 budget.
I'd recommend that Lowell City Council sets the public hearing on May 21st, 2018, at 7:00 p.m. to review the fiscal year budget.
I'll support.
Questions for Mike? Sue?
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Under the resolution 1318 is Section 19 reimbursement, Michael again?
The city will be eligible for Section 19 funding from the state of Michigan pertaining to the February flood event. This means additional costs taken out by the city to address the flood will be eligible for reimbursement. For example, overtime, additional police staffing and equipment we rented strictly for the flood event will be eligible for reimbursement. The city has calculated that we will be eligible for $9,980.09. In order for the city to be eligible, we must pass the attached resolution, which is 1318, the, and submit this to the state of Michigan regarding the funding. This resolution also requires the city to designate a point of contact that will be responsible for providing information and communicating with the state on this matter. Our contact will be Sue Lowell and our city treasurer. I'm recommending the Lowell City Council to approve Resolution 1318 for the city of Lowell to be eligible for Section 19 reimbursement.
Mike, does that go back into the general fund, or does it go to the department set up or charge fees for that? Where does that $9,000 go back into?
We'll, we'll allocate, we have a breakdown based on what fund everything came out of, so it'll be allocated back to the fund that it was extended from. I would say the majority of this is, I believe, I haven't had the attachment, I believe the majority of this came from, from general, with the exception of maybe some of the equipment.
Equipment.
Most of it was general fund expense.
Please step, please step.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
What percentage is that of what we actually spent? Do you have any idea on that?
We calculated about, if you included my time and salary time involved in this, the number of hours of event, we initially calculated about $19,000. But the, the issue was, we couldn't use any straight time.
Correct.
Even though everyone during, every employee during that event was, was dealing with this issue. That was, that was, that was going to be paid, those, those are going to be paid by the city no matter what. I worked like 64 hours during that flood, just in those five days. And I know Steve worked nearly as much, but we don't get overtime, we just get straight time. And so I know a lot of the costs, and if there was any regular equipment that we used, any of our own equipment, we don't get reimbursement. So like our equipment fund, when we're billing rentals normally to our equipment fund, that, those were reimbursable. But we, we, we made, we, we had it set up so all of our costs, rentals, everything, went in to a certain account so we could tabulate it. But at the end of the day, this is what we were eligible for.
Still, if you figure 19, the state's going to give us back almost 10.
Correct.
Getting 50% back from the state on anything, I think it's a pretty good score.
I would say so.
Sorry, I'll recommend the Lowell City Council approve Resolution 1318 to be eligible for Section 19 reimbursement.
I'll support.
Any other discussion? Mr. Albert comments? Okay, Sue?
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
And Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Very good. Item E, Hudson Street Utility Work, Michael?
In preparation for the Kent County Road Commission's Hudson Street Resurfacing Project from the Grand River Bridge to the north city limits, which is tentatively planned for June 2018, the Department of Public Works requested quotes from qualified contractors to replace water valve box and sanitary sewer castings in the Hudson right away, Hudson Street right away. Approximately 20 water valve boxes and 20 sanitary sewer castings are proposed to be replaced within the project limits in advance of the resurfacing work. The replacement is necessary because valve box and sanitary sewer castings become damaged, settle over time, or become unlevel, impact stride, street ride quality. With relatively short notice to get the project implemented, DPW opted to contract three independent contractors to obtain quotes for proposed utility work rather than bid the project out. Those were Kenningham and Ruade Oaks out of Grand Rapids for $55,200. Leased trenching in Byron Center, they turned the work down. Groundhog Escavating in Lowell, we did not receive a response. Funds for the work are available in the found account. We will be amending the budget that's in front of you next week to address this. The wastewater fund, $17,200 out of the capital outlay line item, in the collection capital outlay item, and then $38,000 from the water fund distribution capital outlay, outlay online item. I recommend the city accept Kenningham and Ruade Oaks quote of $55,200 and authorize Mayor and city clerk to execute the contract on behalf of the city.
Michael, are they going to start on the south side then first, and then when that's done, jump to the north?
Actually, that's, that's not going to be the case. The intent is, is if this is approved tonight, they, they would actually go north and work south on this end of the project. We have not gotten definition from the county as to when, when they actually do begin paving construction on Hudson Street on June 11th. We haven't gotten that full schedule, we just know the time period it's going to take. But we anticipate if this is approved, that I believe next, this Wednesday, they can actually begin starting north, north-south traffic, north of Maine and Hudson. They'll be, they'll just be, there'll be lane changes, but there'll be, there'll be lane usage.
Would this be enough time if, when we get to the south for the railroad tracks? If we did that work, would we be reimbursed for it? No. Probably wouldn't have that in time.
No. One of the reasons why, we're, we've, I've already, since, since the conversation I've had with Representative Albert, I have contacted the road commission about possibly partnering and, and doing this. It's the county's road, obviously. And the issue, the issue, the reason we didn't, we didn't do anything with the railroad is because we've been working, we've been working probably since September to try and get this project worked on, and it wasn't until March when the county would, knew how much funding they would have available to do streets. Addressing, if we were trying to address the issue with the railroad, we would not get this project completed this year. And railroads don't move like.
Trains.
Like the trains, correct. But railroad companies, there's, there's certain protocols you have to deal with with them, and they're really not, they're really not, there's really not much, yeah, they're, they actually, they actually trump road, they actually have, if you look at the procedure of how things work, railroads have precedence over even a state, state or a local highway system. So, but we are trying to get that matter resolved.
So, so Mike, look at, is this basically just labor, since we're providing the covers by the city of Lowell Water Department? Valve boxes, these areington covers provided by the city of Lowell in their bid? Notes?
Yes, we already had, yes, we already, from my understanding, we already had these on order.
Okay.
So these sewer castings, they replace the piece that the manhole drops into, that it just raises it up to the elevation that it needs?
My understanding.
And then underwater boxes, they just unscrew the top piece and screw a new one down?
My understanding.
1,200 bucks a piece, or labor seems a little steep. It would have been nice if we could have got more bids on it, but.
It is, yeah.
Yeah, and unfortunately, Rich could probably explain this better than I could. Unfortunately, he's not.
Well, the good thing with them is we know we're going to get quality work out of them, and, and you know, that's important.
Right, they're already, they're already going to be responsible for, for doing the work currently in Broadway in that area anyway, so that does help.
Well, I'll make a motion for KNR quote of $55,200 and authorize the Mayor and City Clerk to execute the contract on behalf of the city council.
I'll support.
Anything else for Mike? Sue?
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
Mayor DeBoer.
Yes.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Okay, last one, Resolution 1418, the village of Caledonia is going to join the Grand Valley Metro Council.
As your representative for the Grand Valley Metro Council, I am informing you of a request from the village of Caledonia gaining membership to the organization. As part of the GVMC bylaws, membership by a municipality is made by a council resolution for each representative community. If the majority of, of the representative communities in GVMC approve of it, then you can gain entry into the Metropolitan Council. I'm recommending that the city of Lowell approve Resolution 1418, granting the village of Caledonia membership into the Grand Valley Metro Council.
Have they not been in it before?
They have not.
No.
Yeah, once you're in, you normally don't leave. I mean, reason being is, is if you're trying to get federal, the biggest reason is the federal eligibility for funding for roads. If you have a federally eligible road, you have to get funding from the MPO, so you have to be a member of the MPO to be eligible for the funding.
So we're one of many that are looking at recommending them?
Correct. I believe there's 114 participating jurisdictions in Grand Valley Metro Council. I believe that's the number.
Make a motion that the city of Lowell approve Resolution 1418, granting the village of Caledonia membership into the Grand Valley Metropolitan Council. I'll support.
All right, Sue?
Mayor DeBoer.
Yeah.
Councilmember Salzweil.
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips.
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers.
Yes.
Councilmember Cantfield.
Yes.
All right, board and commission reports, Mr. Cantfield.
Uh, no meeting since our last.
All right, Mr. Chambers?
My girl this week.
Mr. Salzweil.
I have none.
Jeffrey?
And I don't have anything.
All right, I don't either. I have the DDA was canceled, fire board next Monday, barber board next Monday, and a vision meeting next Tuesday, so I'll have some good reports from everybody on the 21st. Michael makes it, your turn.
Um, kind of already updated this, Hudson Construction, Mill and Overlay will begin on June 11th. They anticipate a five-day construction period. Two of those days, Jackson, I'm sorry, Jackson will be the go-around route as Hudson will be closed between Grand River and Main Street. We do not have the schedule yet from the county as to whether they're going to close Grand, or Hudson. First, first phase or the second phase, they haven't, they haven't informed us of that yet. And then they'll need three days to address the area north of Main Street to the city limits. That part of, that part of the city, there will be, there will be, it will be open to traffic throughout the entire project. There will be, this week, as I mentioned briefly, they will be doing the castings of valve box. They'll start that work in the area north of Maine, and they will, they will have it, they'll, they won't have to shut down traffic during that as well. One good, one good news with the, with the bids, we had agreed to $150,000 to be paid over two years back to Kent County for the cost of the Mill and Overlay. Bids came in about $50,000 less than what the engineer estimate was, and so that'll be $25,000 less that we would have to reimburse the county for that project. So that, that's a good thing. Just to remind, Dan Burton will be here on Tuesday, the 15th. I anticipate 9:00 a.m., once I have more clarification, I will let you know. It'll be, it'll be an interesting day. He is, he is very knowledgeable about things you need to do to improve walkability and things you need to do to establish more placemaking opportunities in your downtown. I, it'll be a very enjoyable day. You'll actually, I, I think you'll learn a lot when he's here. I, it'll be a very enjoyable day, you'll actually, I, I think you'll learn a lot when he's here, and I'm looking forward to him coming, um, to town.
He's going rain or shine?
Yes, it's rain or shine, he's here regardless. Yeah, he's coming from Port Townsend, Washington, he'll be here. Wanted to, um, update the council on something that the Grand Valley Metro Council is, is looking at. As this technology emerges with, um, with our wireless technology, we, um, the last couple of years, we've had issues, uh, with small cells, um, basically they're, they're, they're basically the, uh, where you get the wireless from on your phone. Rather than having your regular cell phone towers, um, these small cell, um, options are coming up, and they're, and they're, they're, they're showing up in many, in many different communities throughout Michigan, throughout the United States. Um, this has been an issue that before I arrived, um, the Grand Valley Metro Council started to look at, because the issue was, was trying to have some type of, um, a unified agreement between the telecommunication industries and municipalities that are involved in it. Communities look at these different ways, a lot of them look at it as, uh, revenue generating options in some, in some aspects. Others, they don't really view it as that, um, certain communities obviously are against them, certain communities don't have no issue with them, and the issue, the issue, the issue with really most of the managers in West Michigan is that we don't have a problem with them, we actually, we encourage this type of technology. The issue is, is ensuring that the local community has some control as to what goes in the right of way. Uh, so the Grand Valley Metro Council, a couple of years, about beginning of 2017, they actually sat down with all the different telecommunication industries and developed a, basically an agreed-upon set of documents and, and ordinances for communities to approve that everyone can, can agree with. And it, and it's been working, um, for the, for the most part. Now, there's bills in the, in the, in the Senate, and I believe they're in the House right now, Senate Bill 636. The, the, the issue with the bill is that with the new, with the new regulation, there's concerns regarding local control because basically if it comes into place, they can, they can, there's a, there's a minimal fee that the, that the community, that the community has to pay, well, that, that they would pay the community to use the right of way, and, and basically there's, there's no control by the municipality as to where these go, they can go anywhere in the right of way, basically from what we're being told with the, uh, with the, with the proposed legislation. Um, I know they have, um, revised the Senate bill somewhat to address some of those concerns, however, to those involved, the Grand Valley Metro Council who are involved in this, they're not, it's not satisfactory enough at this point, and, um, I know these bills are still working on in the, in the legislature. Hoping they take into account the fact that Grand Valley Metro Council's had a solid policy on this, then maybe they would consider that. I'm hoping I would encourage, I would encourage that, um, but what it forces us to do here in Lowell is I've asked the city attorney to start looking into this matter for us about a possible set of ordinances. Now, the issue really on our end is, is it's not, it's not, we're not looking at it as a, as a money generating option. I don't think we'll get much money for it, um, and, uh, and I really, and I have no issues with the technology, I think technology is good, I think we need these things. The concern is gonna be where they go, um, and that would be something that I would hope the, 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 the local jurisdictions would be able to have some say on, uh, and, um, that is something that we're working on, but we're probably gonna be bringing you an ordinance to consider at some point whether or not, the, the big issue, the big issue is, is with these, with this legislation, if the ordinance, if the, if the legislation passes, if you have an ordinance and an agreement with a telecommunication company and it's installed before the, the legislation passes, then your agreement is, is goo, is good, um, and they have to honor your agreement. Currently, we don't have those issues, we don't have any agreements currently with anyone, and we haven't even been approached on it, but I'm still gonna probably bring it to council just more on the principle of the local control matter, so I anticipate you seeing something here in the next couple, next couple of meetings on this. So, we have that issue, also.
Do you mind, you, my, I'm trying to think about that.
Sure.
At the Michigan Municipal Electric Association is the state organization that represents all 40 electric municipals, and at the national level, the American Public Power Association, which represents 2,000 municipal electric utilities. The concern is that these small cell devices, which offer 5G technology, uh, the FCC might institute a law that would force municipals to locate these devices on their poles, and, uh, at the national and state level, we're advocating against that, and even right here in Lowell, if, for example, in the downtown district, we had these cells on certain poles on Broadway, for example, and we wanted to go underground on that street, but if these devices are here, and the FCC said, oh, you have to have these devices on these poles, we might not even build underground service. So, I agree with Mike, and we're doing things, um, on the electric side of the industry too, at the state and national level on this.
Steve, could you still do underground, but would have to leave that single pole for that one transmitter?
Well, the problem is these transmitters potentially could be located on every single pole. So, just aesthetically, it would defeat the purpose.
Thanks, Steve, appreciate it, Mike.
Thank you. Um, also, uh, I was informed by Grand Valley Metro Council that, um, eventually, very shortly, we're gonna be getting requests for calls for project for the transportation improvement plan for fiscal years 21 through 23, that's basically the, the road build, road funding that we get through the federal government that goes to MDOT. We only have, to my knowledge, we only have two city-owned streets that are federally eligible, those are Foreman and, uh, Bob's, and, um, I made a request to Grand Valley Metro Council. I'm sure this is a stretch to see if we can get more of our local streets added as federally eligible roads. I'm not sure that's gonna be possible, but I figured I'd try, so, uh, I'll let you know, uh, where we, where we stand with that. Um, also on Friday, I attended a, uh, a luncheon where Governor Snyder was in attendance, as they have just released the asset management pilot project that I was working on with many other different jurisdictions. It's, it's a rather lengthy, it's a rather lengthy, uh, um, report, and basically what the intent is, is to try and develop an asset management plan that everyone can address uniformly at the state level. Hopefully, the, this pilot project can lead more towards a state asset management plan. Hopefully, this also would lead to funding by the state some way, some form to address our infrastructure. I, if you have to share a copy of the report with, with, with anyone on the council if you so wish, or also to the public, um, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
One question about major streets.
Sure.
Parking isn't allowed on major streets, correct?
That is an issue, yes.
So we lose all our street parking?
Correct, that would be, that, that may be correct, and I'd have to, I'd have to look at that, I, I'm not, and I'm not 100% sure, uh, because my experience is I've received federally funding for projects where we were allowed to have parking on street, it was in a downtown district, but I would have, I would have to look into that.
I think that's a factor we might not look into before we pull the trigger.
Sure.
We need a road spec, but that might upset some people too.
Sure.
I think there's talk about that at the time on Jefferson, and we'd have to give up some parking rights.
Okay.
All right, uh, item A is appointments, no applications, correct?
None.
Okay, I did talk to Jeff Dickerman, he's willing to continue in his capacity on the Light and Power Board, and then Kelly Vreemeyer, we can't swear until next meeting, correct?
Right.
After the 14th, I mean, um, so I still haven't spoke to Nancy Wood or Bruce Parker, but everything else is a resignation, so we need applications for those if you wanna be involved. Uh, council comments, Jeffrey?
I don't have anything, I just hope everybody has a good week.
Thank you, Jim?
I, I do wanna confirm that other board members will be, our councilmembers will be walking in the Memorial Day Parade, and it's supposed to be my first year, so what time does that all begin and where do you meet and what do you do?
We met at the King Building last year, but I don't remember what time.
I believe the parade started at 10:00.
Yeah, and we were there about 9:30, Greg, Mike and I walked.
Yep.
So. Plan on doing that again?
Yep.
Thank you, Greg.
Nothing.
Mr. Chambers?
I am good, sir.
All right, I am good as well, uh, now I'll look for a motion for us to go into closed session to discuss some labor negotiations.
I'll make a motion that we go into a closed session at 8:12.
I'll work.
All right. Sue?
Councilmember Salzweil?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Chambers?
Yes.
Councilmember Cantile?
Yes.
Mayor and Board?
Yes, all right, we'll go into closed session and we'll come back out forward, Jeffrey?